Good evening, I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for August 26, 2019. Call upon Councilmember Dot Miller.
Thank you, sir. Could we please pause for a moment of silent reflection? And now if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all. Kristen Rush, if you'll do the roll call. Here. Here. Here.
Here. Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Very good. We have public comment at this point. I have several people who have signed up to speak on the resolution that we'll be considering tonight regarding an advisory question. What I'm going to propose to you all is that let's have the presentation from our team, and then I'll call upon each of you to provide testimony as part of that hearing. It's not a public hearing, but it's certainly a resolution that I want to hear, we all want to hear, from our citizens on this issue. So I've got those, and if others wish to speak as well, they certainly can. Is there anybody that would like to speak on a topic in public comment that is not related to that issue? Seeing none, I'll close that public comment portion, but certainly give everybody an opportunity to speak under our discussion of the resolution. So at this time, I'm going to open it up for new business, which is Resolution 2019-926, a resolution referring an advisory question on organized waste hauling to the electors of the city on the November 5, 2019, regular municipal election ballot, and that's R-19074. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So this resolution is presented to you for consideration tonight, and I think we will have Jessica Prosser assist us with making the presentation. We have a PowerPoint that will help define the issues and the information that's important for the council to consider.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. As Mr. Devon just stated, this is a topic that we have been talking about much of this year. We've had several workshops on this issue throughout the year. Ben, would you mind advancing the slide? And so this kind of just outlines some of the public outreach that we've done, some of the workshops that we've hosted with council, the surveying that we've done of the community, some of the FAQs that we've compiled on this issue. In June, we went out for a request for proposals on this issue to solicit programs and different options from waste haulers. We had four waste haulers that responded to that RFP. On July 22, we came back to you with those options laid out aggregated by different topics, and from their counsel provided a recommendation to move forward with constructing a ballot question on this issue. So tonight, we're bringing before you some draft ballot language that we have discussed previously, and that would be on the next slide, laid out here. So I could read through it, but I will just kind of go through the intent of it. This is intended to be a simplified question wherein it would describe to voters what an organized waste hauling system would be. Some of the major intents of this question come from the public engagement that we've done on this. The things that are most important to people are increasing options for recycling and reducing the number of trash trucks on the roads by creating an organized waste hauling system. The other options, other components of it would be to describe that it would be a competitive bidding process. We did receive those requests for proposals, and if the ballot question passed and council moved forward with this, we would still need to develop an ordinance on this issue and then also negotiate a contract with a waste hauler. So this, this language is intended to sort of capture that. The details of the program would need to be worked out during contract negotiations. So this provides an overview of what organized waste hauling would look like in Arvada. And I think that's all I have for right now.
Okay, very good. We have, as I indicated, several people that would like to address us on this topic, so I'll start with Stephanie Wells. Good evening.
Good evening, council. My name is Stephanie Wells. I live at 12458 West 70th Place in Arvada, and I would like to express my opinion about whether or not to put the advisory question on the ballot concerning organized trash hauling. What I worry about is that the citizens who are going to be called to vote on this are not going to have all the information that they really need to be informed about the topic. And very specifically and most important, at least to my friends, is how much is it going to cost, or how much less is it going to cost than they're already paying? And they will not know that when they go into this ballot. I personally have voted in the last two Arvada city elections for council members, and when I did so, those that were elected, I trust them to make the right decisions without having to ask the public on a number of small details. At least that's my opinion. And I believe you should all take your duly elected positions and jobs as you've been elected to do, and just do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, Tina Delisa Bos.
Bos.
Good evening. And following that will be Georgia Duncan.
Okay. This will just be short and sweet. I understand the, I understand what is needed with the trash hauling. I have been in Arvada for 12 years, North Denver, fourth generation before that. So I have seen in our neighborhood that eight trucks in six days come down our street. And it's so important that that gets fixed because of how much it damages the roads, how much the infrastructure is impacted by that. My husband works from home in IT, as do a lot of people in Arvada, and so it's a lot of traffic that goes down our streets that does not need to be there. The thing that concerns me about it being a ballot issue is that there's a lot of communities in Arvada that are HOAs that don't have the problems with it, and they won't realize that it's an issue. And what she said about it being the cost. So I worry about the voters that don't understand the issue for the rest of us voting on something that has to do with cost that's not going to be affecting their area. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Georgia Duncan, and then Stephen Nixon.
I'm Georgia Duncan. I live at 6440 Youngfield Street in Arvada, and I would like to make the public comment concerning whether or not to put organized waste hauling on the November ballot as an advisory question. I believe this issue should not be placed on the ballot for three reasons, some of which have been covered already. First, a ballot question would invite those opposing organized waste hauling to pour big money into defeating the issue, and the other side wouldn't have, you know, the number of, be able to have the same monetary input. Second, Arvada voters could not make an informed decision on this matter because only city council and staff have access to details like price, which, the prices that each company proposed, and which all of these were submitted to them in response to the requests for proposals in July. Finally, an advisory question does not bind the council to take any action. Arvadans could vote yes, and the council could take no action. Arvadans have already given input to council. It's time for council to act. They should vote, I hope, in favor of organized waste hauling in Arvada.
Thank you, ma'am. Stephen Nixon, and then Tara Kent.
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Evening.
I've talked to you before about this issue, so I think you probably understand that I'm very much in support of the organized hauling measures. I am very much opposed to the ballot advisory question because I think it's going to be very difficult for you and for the residents of the city to analyze the results properly. There's no guidance, in the way this is worded as proposed here, there's no guidance to the voters as to who is affected and who is not. I'm not sure what the ratio is of the people who live in complexes of eight or more that I think are excluded from this, and the HOAs that have their own trash hauling, but I'm guessing it's probably about 50/50. That means it's going to be very difficult for you to understand the people who are actually affected, like I am, with multiple trash trucks and all of the issues there, how they're voting versus how the other people who may just have a political or monetary beef with the whole concept, or maybe they're very much in support, or maybe they're very much against. But they have no real stake in the game because they're not impacted the way the rest of us are. So, thank you.
Thank you. Tara Kent, and then Mark Reiner.
Mayor, council.
Evening.
Tara Kent, District 3, and you've all heard me before on this issue. I sit on the Arvada Sustainability Board, so we've been working on this for a number of years. And we have put in modified language for this advisory question that came out on Friday. So I'd hope you, if this does go to the ballot, which I'm against as well, I hope that you would take our comments into account for the reasons that the three women and Steve had just said. It doesn't affect everybody in the city. We have people voting on this that is not going to affect them. It doesn't tell people that you can opt out of this as well, and so people aren't going to understand the full complexity of this issue based on this language. You've all heard me talk about my nine trucks on my street, which is a dead end of 12 houses. I'm sick and tired of it. So I'm ready for change, I'm ready for organized hauling. And then finally, where I also see this hits home is climate change is probably the biggest threat to humanity at this point, and Arvada can take a lead on reducing some of our greenhouse gas emissions by reducing the number of trucks on streets. And so I see Arvada taking a lead in the metro community and watching, having Lakewood and Westminster watch us take the lead in an organized hauling system that will reduce air emissions. So thank, thank you.
Thank you very much. And we do have the language that the Sustainability Committee's submitted, and we'll be talking about that, so. Mr. Reiner, and then Randy Mormon.
So thank you, Mayor and council. This is, I'm Mark Reiner. I'm at 6948 Howell Street in Arvada, and I am in support of the organized hauling. I want to just provide a little bit of numbers from an engineering perspective and from a concerned taxpayer perspective, though, that municipal solid waste is a sector of urban infrastructure, and like water, sewer, storm, energy, those are all monopolies. And I got to say that City of Arvada Water is among the best water in the country, one of the lowest rates, excellent whatever problems you might have with them, extremely reliable, monopolies. I cannot imagine this idea of free enterprise being a real conversation, that if we had multiple water utilities, that we'd be better off. So municipal solid waste as a monopoly with a rate structure oversight would be a good thing for us. In terms of an engineer, I think it's been brought up a few times, and I just want to throw a couple of points up here, that the typical loaded garbage truck, you can't see it, sorry, but it's 36,000 pounds, and that comes out to be 18 kips or 18,000 pounds per axle.
And sir, we've got your, so, yes, so you can refer, certainly refer to it, but we've got it in front of us.
For everybody else, yep. What that does is if you plug it in in terms of damage to the pavement, the typical garbage truck does as much damage as 9,600 passenger cars, and in a residential neighborhood, each truck is equivalent of 15 days of traffic. In fact, a garbage truck does more damage than an 18-wheeler because 18-wheelers have multiple axles, which comes out to be 17 kips. And it's well known that garbage trucks are under the incentive to overhaul or overburden their load before they go back to central. So even if you raise it just by 10% to 20 kips per axle, that'd be the equivalent of 13,800 cars per garbage truck. The photo below is in my neighborhood that I have what's called rigid pavement, which is concrete. Asphalt is flexible, but you can see that as soon as that pavement cracks, it is no longer rigid and doesn't transmit the pressure. It becomes a direct conduit to the vibrations that has already been brought up that vibrates all the infrastructure below us, which is gas, electric, telecommunications, water, sewer, storm. Those are all being impacted by these garbage trucks. And finally, just from a neighborhood perspective, the sound has been brought up, but diesel fumes, so not even carbon, not even climate change, but PM 2.5, our air quality in our neighborhood, the sound. And this is a letter from to all homeowners in Maple Valley, I'm in that HOA, that the president wanted to let everybody know that the oil leaks from the trash trucks that have happened, oh, I've reached out to the city's Stormwater Quality Division, asked them to follow up about these. Consistent spills since their issue notices a violation that require follow-up action. Each truck has a potential of putting this kind of oil on our roads, which gets into our stormwater. All this is expenses to the taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Mormon, and then Iris Horowitz.
Good evening, Mayor Williams, and members of the Arvada City Council. Thank you again for all your work that you've done on this issue, and I want to thank the staff again as well. It's been, we've been working on this for quite a while with the Arvada Sustainability Advisory Committee. I too am very concerned that the draft ballot language does not contain enough information for voters to make a sound decision when they go to vote on this. And as others have spoken to, the fact that there's a lot of questions that people are going to have, how much is this going to cost, what kind of services are going to be offered, and these are answers that we cannot provide in a ballot question. I don't feel like we need to rush this, and I think that we can take our time, and we can really, I think more importantly, use the time to have stakeholder engagement and do town halls and have discussions with the public to get that important input about the really specific nuances of what should go into a program and what kind of contract we should be setting up with a hauler. Thank you.
So are you asking for delay?
I am.
Iris Horowitz, and then Rachel Smallway.
Hello, members of council. Thank you for your time. I too have been up here before as the member of the Sustainability Council to speak to organized hauling, and I wanted to express some concerns I have about the current ballot language. So I wanted to share that for the last several months, I've been speaking a lot with my neighbors and other community members about this issue, and there were three things that had come up again and again in terms of things that they really wanted to talk more about and learn more about. Those things were, they're excited to learn that organized hauling could bring more recycling options, like bulky item pickup, curbside composting potentially, and that people were relieved to hear it wasn't a complete citywide takeover by any means because most HOAs and apartment and condo complexes would be exempt. The third thing that I heard over and over was that they were happy that it was not, quote, "mandatory recycling" because state law prohibits a city from requiring residents to choose any specific hauler, even if you were to go forward with the ordinance. So I think that was also just the fact that the city would provide an opt-out option was something that they were all very happy to hear. So I wanted to express concern that these details, while they elicited many conversations, they did not make it to the ballot language, and I feel that, you know, to omit this language would confuse voters, very much so, and would not give them enough information to make a sound decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and city council members. Thanks for letting me speak, and thanks for all the work that you and city staff have been doing for the last, and to ASAC for all the work they've been doing for the last two years on this issue, educating the community. I'm just getting the word out there. I, as you know, am very much in support of organized waste hauling, and am in agreement with many things that have been said tonight that it should not go on the ballot as an advisory question, for a lot of the same reasons that people have already said, mainly that there's just not going to be enough information. When one of these workshops from the past, when, when you all decided, let's do, explore this further, let's do, think about putting out an RFP, you looked to the audience towards APA and towards ASAC and anybody else who was in support, and you said, we're going to need your help. And I'm all about helping get this passed, but I will tell you that trying to convince people to vote on a ballot measure, when I don't have the information to tell them what, what the outcome is going to be, I don't want to. I will, maybe I shouldn't be leading with that, but I, it sounds hard, and it's a huge weight on my shoulders, and I, I wish that you wouldn't make me. So I also would really love to have all of, you know, the people in front of me who have said that they're in support of this to be out there working with me, trying to get the word out there, trying to get people in support of that, and my understanding is that you won't be allowed to if it's on the ballot. So even more weight on my shoulders. Again, please, please take your responsibility as elected officials and make this decision because it's your responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address city council on this?
Yes, Mindy Moore. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and as everyone has said, we do appreciate everything that you do for our wonderful city. I won't repeat many of the other things that you've heard tonight, but I am also in favor of holding off. This is not ripe for an advisory question when there's not enough information. I also want to, you know, say that Councilwoman Ford, at a previous workshop on short-term rentals, raised a very good question. Why does a city have citizen advisory committees if the city doesn't want to hear what the citizens have to say? You're hearing from the Sustainability Advisory Committee, concerns about going forward on this, especially with language that's misleading. This is not a citywide organized system. There's, you know, significant chunks of the city and many districts will be excluded or exempted from this. As Councilmember Marriott said during the workshop on this issue, there, there are consumer choices, whether it's opting out or picking the volume, the size of the container so that a citizen can choose the price that they pay, how much, the size that they need. That's not included in here. This is, this is just very misleading, and I think if you go forward with this, it'll, it'll be a farce. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Brianna Taton, 6232 Kilmer Loop. I live in an HOA. This won't affect me, but I agree with many of the things that everyone was saying about this advisory question, it's too vague. And, I mean, people don't really pay that much attention to what's going on. They, they see what's going on in the Facebook forums, not always the best information to be had there, and people will not have the correct information to make an informed decision about it, because I've been getting asked a lot of these questions myself, and I had to figure out what to, what to tell them moving forward. So there's been some gaps in, in the knowledge, and I think that it would be premature to get this on the ballot at this time, and we should have further conversation. And I appreciate having the conversation. I know that over the years, this has been a difficult conversation to have, and I appreciate you moving forward with this to entertain this very important environmental issue that we're facing right now. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll move back then to council for council questions. Mr. McGough, I'll let you lead off.
Thank you. Yes, I have a question for the, I guess Randy Mormon would be the best one to answer this, since you were the first one who talked about perhaps this question should be delayed. Is that, were you speaking then as an individual, or is that the position of the, of the Sustainability Committee at this time?
Please, yes, if you'll come down to the mic.
Mr. Mayor and Mr. McGough, I was speaking on my, on my own personal opinion on that issue.
Okay, we did, I believe, two other people from the Sustainability Committee who shared your thoughts, but that's not, it's not presented as a, as a Sustainability Committee recommendation.
That is correct.
Okay. I just want to be clear. Thank you.
Right. Other council questions? Do we want to look at the language that the Advisory Committee has put before us? I understand we have that. Let's put that up.
Mr. Mayor, I do have, I do have another question, and this would be for staff. I believe that we're at a time-sensitive date, August 26. If there should be any delay, isn't it the case that it would not be ready then for consideration in the November ballot?
That's correct.
What would be the last possible date? After, this would be the last regularly scheduled meeting perhaps, but what would be the last date if, if it should be delayed and if there should be a special meeting called to consider a question beyond this?
So September 6 is the last day that we have to set language for the ballot and submit that to our, our partners at the various counties.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I think what my sense is, we need to look at proposed language from the Advisory Committee.
Yep.
And then I guess we need to have a discussion of, do we even want to put it on the ballot based upon some of the feedback we're getting tonight? We've always had the question of, is this something, you know, that a majority of council would rather decide as a council, and whether or not we have enough information to do that based upon the information we've got thus far, and so how we want to move forward. So I think we've got some decisions to make, and I think we're in the fourth quarter, so it's time to, to decide those things. Okay, so here's, here's language. Who would like to start on this? Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll, I'll start with just this language proposals made by the Sustainability Advisory Committee. I have problems with a couple of these. The first one is the, the yellow highlighted line that says "most HOAs and multifamily excluded." I don't think that's factually accurate, because I think any HOA that does not provide trash service as part of their HOA dues is not excluded, they're, they're actually included. I also believe any HOA, the intent anyway, any HOA that provides trash service only with no recycling component would also not be excluded. I think probably the accurate thing would be to say "some HOAs, not most." The other part is "multifamily excluded." I think to the layperson, multifamily living means duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, sixplexes, eightplexes, twelves, twenties, sixties, you know, whatever. I, I believe this particular issue would follow the state law and only address, the only ones that would be excluded are those that are eight units or more. So again, I think that language there is factually inaccurate. It should probably say "some multifamily excluded," because I don't think, I wouldn't have any idea how our multifamily stacks up as far as what percentage of them are over eight units and what percentage of them are under eight units, but most connotates that if you live in multifamily, you're excluded from this, and I don't think that's true. I think some of the multifamily would be excluded, but some would not. So that's that first line, the place I would have trouble with inserting that as is. The next line, which is, says increased options.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Could we just ask staff to react to this first point?
Sure.
Before we move to the second one, and just take them one at a time?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, so I'll just go through the five
Yes, so I'll just go through the five suggested modifications with staff's recommendation.
No, we just want to do one at a time.
Oh, one at a time.
Just one at a time.
Sorry. Okay. So for the first one, there could be two different statements that could be more accurately reflected of what the system may be. It would be offer options for homeowners associations to be part of the system. And the second piece would be, single-family and multifamily residents with seven or fewer units would be included in the program. So those would be two more accurate statements to, if we want to get into the details in the ballot language.
So if, would it be just as accurate to just keep this the way it is, but say, when it comes to where it says hauling and recycling services and then in parentheses, say, some HOA and multifamily excluded, instead of just change the word most to some? I think that makes it factually accurate. Is that a fatal change that you think misleads people or makes people not know what's going on here?
Factually, it would be correct. It would not be as specific, but yes, it could work.
Okay. Okay, let's hear where fellow council members are on that. So you could live with the, the added language in yellow if it said some instead of most?
That would be my proposal, yeah. I, I, I don't have any problem with that. Yellow language included. It just needs to be factually accurate and that word most needs to be some by my eyes.
Okay. Yes?
So Jessica, could you read that, the last statement where you included the dwelling units?
Sure. We would have to see how this gets incorporated into the sentence, but essentially, single-family and multifamily residences with seven or fewer units would be what's included in the program.
So could you, could it, again, we're not wordsmithing here tonight, but some HOAs and that statement?
And single-family and multifamily residences with seven or fewer units.
Yeah.
Well, those aren't the ones that are excluded. It's the opposite. It's the one over.
Right. They're included in the program. Correct.
Well, so to be consistent, it should be some HOAs and multifamily of eight or more units excluded.
Correct.
Yeah, so it's just, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, let's not have one included and one excluded.
Right.
Let's have them both excluded if we're going to do it that way.
Because again, not getting too far into comments, but you know, some of the feedback we heard tonight, and I think some of the feedback that we've had amongst ourselves is that it still is a little vague. And so if we're going to have an advisory question, we need to try and include as much factual data as possible so that those who are voting can make a clear decision one way or the other. So, so that would be, I would be in favor of some and...
Some HOAs and multifamily units of eight or more excluded.
Right. Although I think in that sentence construction, I think we'd have to look more closely. The some says some HOAs excluded, but we, are we saying some, some multi? How's the rest of that work?
I would look to my English teacher.
It would be all multifamily of, of greater than eight, of eight or more.
Right. So it's some for the HOAs and all for the units eight or more, so.
Okay. Nancy, did you wish to, Ms. Ford, do you wish to speak to that point?
No.
Okay. Are you in agreement with that change?
I, I wanted to make sure that if we were going to say multifamily, that it was identified so that people knew what it was.
By the size.
But we're, but we're doing that, so.
Great. Mr. Pfeiffer? Mr. Pfeiffer's okay with that? Ms. Miller? Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, and was everybody okay on the, striking the citywide? I don't think that was, that's okay. So let's move to the next one. And again, Mr. Marriott?
Okay.
You've got the floor.
So the next, the next line where it says increased options for recycling, composting and bulky items, I just want to point out that at no point have we been entertaining the idea of composting be part of the RFP that we asked for proposals on, nor at anywhere along the line, that being the case. I think, I think we're probably open to composting being an additional service that somebody could purchase from whoever the vendor is if they wanted to. But again, I think that sentence as it complete, as it reads is factually inaccurate and I would suggest to make it accurate, you just take the word composting out and, and then it, then it becomes factually accurate. I think if the word composting is in there, for citizens who vote one way or the other on this, if it succeeds, they're going to expect to have composting as a option that we provide them. And we have at this point absolutely no, no information on what that means, what it would cost, what it would take, any, anything, because we have up to this point not entertained that at all. So I'm really uncomfortable with that word composting being in the advisory question there.
Okay, let's hear from our team in terms of the, the team position on this and then we'll go around the group again to see where we are on this proposed portion.
So to clarify, composting was included in the RFP as an add-on service only. So it would not be included in the sort of base overall program. So the staff recommendation would be to strike that composting from the sentences. It would not be accurate. Bulky item, while we don't know the specifics of how the bulky item program would work, it is something that would be part of the program and so it would be accurate to leave that in.
Okay. So Mr. McGough, we'll start again with you.
Yeah, I would be fine with that. I just, and I don't want to get too much into the wordsmithing, but it needs to be something like increased options for recycling and bulky item pickup.
Yes, that would be.
Not just bulky items. And not pick up as one word, as a compound word, but rather, two words, pick up.
Okay. Ms. Ford?
Well, I was wondering if we couldn't add and the, and the addition of other services such as composting. So even though it wouldn't be part of the base, I guess Jessica, I'm kind of speaking to you on this a little bit too, you know, could we add in additional services? Because I think that is a service that many citizens would like to have who have large yards and we certainly have a lot of comments when we have storms and, you know, I know I've gotten phone calls when the city didn't have an option for leaf and branch drop-off sites. You know, that would be a time when maybe citizens would want to add that service or, you know, would make them think about it, let's put it that way.
So it would be factually accurate to say additional services and then add composting?
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Well, I think it's fine the way it is because increased options, it's not, it doesn't say base, it doesn't say an absolute. It just says it's increasing options for recycling, composting and bulky. Are we not plural on that item or something? But I think those are options. We didn't say trash. If we're talking about absolute baseliningness, we should be saying to provide trash recycling bulky items, but that's not what we're saying in the sentence, right? So I think it's fine the way it's proposed by the Sustainability, increased options for recycling compost and bulky items.
Okay, Ms. Miller?
I think that if composting is not part of the basic package, we shouldn't include it in this, in the ballot language.
Mr. Jones?
So I'm going back to December when this was, I think it was December when the Sustainability Committee brought this to us. And really the focus then was around trash and recycling. That was kind of the, the mission around the conversation that had a bunch of other benefits to it, such as roads and pollution and all of that. So I would suggest that we, and I, and I get that we asked for it in the, in the RFP, but I think that was, that was maybe against what my idea of the RFP might have been in keeping it more simple so that it would be easier to get pricing and get, you know, specific information around how some of this would be included. So I think if we're going to stick to the original recommendation of the Sustainability Committee, which was trash and recycling, I even struggle a little bit with bulky items. I think it's a great thing, but I don't know if, and maybe I'm wrong, but I don't remember that being talked about specifically in December. I specifically remember the, the trash and recycling. So that's, I could live with bulk and the pickup of bulky items as well, as Mr. McGough stated it. So I, again, I think this question has to be very basic and to the, to the very basic services that an organized system would provide.
I'm, I'm a little curious as to why we would drop the language about reducing landfill waste because I think that's been one of the goals of this. So I, I would be sort of inclined to keep reduce landfill waste.
While increasing options.
Yes, yeah. While increasing options for recycling and bulky item pickup would be sort of my...
I like that.
Okay.
How do we, how do we answer the question of the specific data around how much land, you know, how much are we saving in the landfills?
Well, we're not saying by a certain percentage. I mean, I mean, it's just...
But what if we don't reduce?
Well, by the very nature of having recycling, doesn't that reduce landfill waste?
You would think. I, I, yeah, well, I mean, you can, you can, you can assume.
I mean, I just look at my trash cans.
Well...
And I've got, you know, two bags for the week and my 96 gallon that's going every week and I, this week I'm going to be, I'm going to have to wait a week or two weeks to get everything that I've got for recycling into.
But I guess, you know, again, trying to have a concise question. If we don't know for sure that it's going to reduce it, then why say it?
I, I guess I'm pretty confident for sure that we are going to reduce landfill waste, but if that's the... So where are we on that?
I think you're at, well, there's three for sure. I'd agree with you.
So four?
Four.
Okay, so reduce landfill waste while increasing options for recycling and bulky item pickup, right? Is that, folks are okay with that?
Yes.
Four people are okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, next?
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. So I'll move down to the third line that starts with depending on service options chosen by residents. So again, this is a statement that I think may be true, may also not be true. And the reason for that is until we contract with a hauler to provide this service, we don't know if there will be service options for residents to choose or not. We just talked about composting that may or may not be an option that the hauler can and does provide. We also, this could also refer to, you know, different sized trash cans and things like that. While we've explored that and looked at that via the RFP, at this point, the other option is to not do that and to do one size trash can for everybody. And so it's very conceivable, I would call it about a 50/50 prospect, that the residents will have no options that they can choose. Now, there's also a possibility that they will have options they can choose, but if we're going to put it in a ballot question for them to vote on, I think we're pre-deciding that we are going to give them options where we may very well not. And so I think that sentence is completely accurate until you get to the depending on service options because I think it's absolutely true that we're going to make an effort to obtain competitive pricing, which may or may not reduce costs for individual households. I think another accurate way of saying that is obtain competitive pricing which may lower the cost for some residents while keeping it the same for others and raising it for others, because I think that's actually probably the most accurate way to say it. But I don't think it needs to be said that way. I just think the, the line depending on service options chosen by residents is not factually accurate and does not belong in the advisory question.
Okay. What's the team position on that one?
So for this one, based on council direction at our last workshop, volume-based pricing was preferable. However, we do have to still get into contract negotiations. So there will be options throughout the program for different things. So I, I don't know that staff really has a position on this one one way or the other. It could be just depending on the service options. Since we don't know exactly what those service options are, that could be added. I think the intent of the Sustainability Committee's offering on this one is to show that residents would still have an option throughout this program to choose what their price would be based on the different offerings of the program. Again, we don't have the, the absolute specifics on the program yet.
Can I make a quick?
Yes, go ahead.
So Jessica, I agree with you wholeheartedly there. If that just read depending on service options, I think that's factually accurate and I'm totally okay with it being like that. So if that sentence is a big addition, I'm happy to have half of it be there. Be just taking three of nine words away or something. So I, I think that's okay. That's okay too. I just, I think however this question goes, if this question goes on the ballot and if is passed by the residents, they are going to expect everything they see on this question. I think we have to be careful to make sure we're only promising what we can deliver.
Okay, Mr. McGough?
Yes, I was going to say on that, that would be fine. See the language again, I've got to find the right point here. Well, just, instead of just ending it with depending on service options, perhaps saying depending on the service options in the contract, something like that, so that it's not service options chosen by residents, but depending upon the service options offered by the contractor in the contract, whatever.
Ms. Ford?
I would have a hard time as a resident not feeling that I could choose the services that I wanted. And I speak on that from a person who lives in a condominium with a one-car garage because one of the options that I chose when I, when I chose recycling, because I live in an HOA where my HOA gives us the option to pay for it on our own, I did it because I could choose the size can that would fit appropriately in my garage. So I think that any program that we would do on a citywide basis, even though it's not on a citywide basis according to this advisory question, would not be a good program unless people could choose what services they wanted to pay for.
But Ms. Ford, haven't we seen that when you offer the full complement of options that it pushes up the price? And that's one of the factors that I think we have to consider and what our citizens are going to have to consider if this goes on the ballot. And so my sense is, you know, if, if, if folks get to pick one from column A, one from column B, and one from column C, that the, the bid that we're going to get, the final bid we're going to get and negotiate, is going to be at a higher cost than more of the one-size-fits-all, which would probably be the 96-gallon containers.
Yeah, and I would have problems with that frankly as a resident. I think that any program that we would do, you know, would have to give citizens some options for the household that they live in.
May I ask, Ms. Ford, what language would you suggest to, to take care of your concerns?
Well, it seems to me from what Jessica has said that, that there was that option for different size trash pickup, right? And I don't know. I, I don't have a problem chosen by residents. Jessica, is that, is what the mayor just said a true statement that if there were those options that that would drive the cost up?
So that'll depend on... So that'll depend on final pricing? It'll also depend on what your household chooses. So, the volume-based pricing would have different options for each of the different sizes with recycling embedded in the cost. However, then you also have the additional services. So, a household may want composting service, they may want more often bulky item pickup, they may want two of a certain sized trash can. So, every household, just like they do today, has the option to sort of pick and choose. There'll be more options with this program.
And that won't affect the price, or it could affect the price?
It will affect the price. Each household will, every household on a street could essentially have a different price that they pay for waste hauling, depending on what options that they choose. So, I believe that's the intent of adding this statement, is to show that there will be options for people to choose what their price is, depending on what services they need for their household.
So what, what would you favor, depending on the service options, or chose, or the service options chosen by residents?
I don't think it makes much difference. I think the beginning part of the statement is really, you know, the important part. And then something about options at the end would be helpful to clarify that there will be options for the program to choose sort of what you need. That's that kind of volume-based pricing, or like any other utility, you have options for what services you want.
Okay.
Ms. Pfeiffer?
So could you read that one more time, the language, I think you said a little earlier on this?
So, the option would be to just end it, depending on the service options? And then, I believe someone, Mr. McGough or John Marriott, and somebody added included in the contract.
That was proposed by Mr. McGough and accepted by Mr. Marriott. Even though there's not a formal motion at this juncture.
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. McGough's language, just because I do think we need to talk about options, and I do appreciate the fact that you wanna say chosen by residents, but I think it could be misleading that the residents are gonna have a lot of choice inside the contract. And I think if we refer back to the contract, there'll be choices and options, but it's limited to the contract. It's not a menu of items necessarily. So I'd agree with Mr. McGough.
Okay. Ms. Miller?
I agree with Mr. McGough.
Okay. Mr. Jones, you agree with that?
Yep.
Yeah, so, so depending upon the service options contained in the contract, is that what we're?
So, staff would actually recommend using the word program rather than contract.
Okay.
Okay, fine. Program. Okay. Next one is fixed term.
Well, yeah, yeah, correct. So the next option, the next highlighted line is for fixed term. I have no problem with that.
Everybody else is good with that?
Yes.
Good.
Okay. So, we'll get down to the last one, which is the, the phrase with the ability to opt out. Again, I think in an effort to be completely transparent and accurate, that needs to say with the ability to opt out with a fee. Because every one of the proposals we've entertained has contained that. We have not seen a single proposal where there was any ability to opt out with no fee. And so, I think it's absolutely, for people who are gonna look at this and vote on it, for them to know what they're voting on, it needs to contain that.
Mr. McGough?
Yeah, I think we're, we're close there. I, I think there's a little more that's needed in the language with the ability for individuals or whatever to opt out. It's, without that, it gets a little confusing when we, or a little ambiguous to just simply say, would you support the city contract, et cetera? With the ability to opt out, who's opt, who has the ability to opt out? And I think we have to be a little more clear on that, but I think we can clarify that language. It's individual residences or residents, whichever we wanna say.
Mr. McGough, my greatest concern there is to opt out with a fee. I think what you're saying with-
And I'm, and I'm fine with that.
Individuals having the ability to opt out.
Right, I'm fine, I'm fine with that.
With a fee. The with a fee part is the part that-
Yeah, yeah, so I'm, I'm good with that. It just, I'm not sure whether it's the city has the option, can opt out, or whether it's individuals. And so, with the fee, I'm, I'm okay with that.
So I'll just chime in. We have language that would say op, a bill, or, so it would be services with options for residences to opt out of the program for a fee. So it would be specific to residents.
I think that's good.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Ms. Ford?
I wanted to bring up a question on something else.
But are you on this, on this one?
I'm okay with that.
You're okay with this one?
(laughing).
Okay, Mr. Pfeiffer? Okay, Ms. Miller?
I'm good.
Ms. Jones? And you're okay with the languages?
Yep.
As Jessica's provided? Okay? We're good with that. Okay, Ms. Ford?
So I wanted to bring up the point that has been made tonight about, that several have made on the, a number of residents in the community that would really have the option to opt out. Because Jessica, was it, did we do this bid on, was it thirty or thirty-two thousand, something like that?
Thirty-two thousand households.
Thirty-two thousands, uh, thirty-two thousand. So that means that, you know, if you look at the numbers, just taking our population at, excuse me, a hundred and eighteen thousand, you know, we're looking at eighty-six thousand residents who would have the option to opt out of this program versus the thirty thousand, or thirty-two thousand, excuse me, who would make use of this program, correct? My, is that right? No?
No. So we have about forty-eight thousand households in Arvada. We used Assessor data to understand how many households were eight or more units of multifamily. And then we also had information that about a third of our HOAs have organized waste hauling systems. And so we added those numbers together to get to about sixteen thousand households that would most likely not be included in the program. And we did have caveats in our RFP that those are estimated numbers. That's how we got to the thirty-two thousand households. So it's not population, it's households.
Okay. So, sorry, I'm, I'm not fast in math on the dais here. So what, what's the percentage again, that would be involved in this program versus those who have the option to opt out? In terms of households?
About two-thirds would be in the program.
Two-thirds would be in the program?
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you. So now that we spent all that time talking about the language, I would like to bring up a point that was also brought up tonight, whether or not we should even put this on the ballot.
Yeah, I think that's a good discussion point and-
May I?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. So, I think that council should make this decision. You know, we have surveyed the citizens twice and asked them, and they've said to us, yes, we would like to explore this and we'd like to see single hauler and more recycling. We have also been talking to our citizens for two years about this, and the people that we have been talking with have told us what their thoughts are. And the more we talk to, the more that they agree that we should go with a citywide program. There are a very large number of people that this does not impact. We've heard all of this tonight. HOAs, multi-units over eight units. There are so many people that don't have multiple trash trucks running down this street. There also is an ability to opt out, so anybody can opt out of this program. So I think that we've heard from the citizens, we have done a great job asking, you know, all the questions that we need to ask, and I think that it's time for us to make a decision.
Ms. Marriott?
I hadn't even pushed my button yet, but thanks.
(laughing).
It was still lit, so. So, I'm, I'm gonna take the opposite view here and, and, and say that it's absolutely important that we do put this to a vote of our citizens. This is a monumental way change in the way that we do business here in Arvada, or that most, that citizens do business for their trash hauling. And I think you cannot make a change like this lightly. The surveys we did contained very few responses when compared to the number of either residents or households in the, in the city of Arvada. And I think, call this a, a more in-depth survey, a survey where people have some, have some incentive to fill it out, regardless of which side of this you're on. For me, the bottom line of this program is, is that we're sacrificing consumer choice. And if we're gonna get rid of, if we're gonna lose consumer choice, we ought to be asking our citizens, are you okay with that? That's a giant change to me. So, for me, I think it's absolutely important that we do put it on the ballot. I, I think, you know, one of the, Mr. Mormon tonight said, well, don't put it on the ballot yet, let's think about it some more, talk about it some more. I'm not even opposed to that. But I think ultimately this has to go to the ballot. And I'm completely prepared to support this a hundred percent if our citizens tell us that's what they want. And we'll, you know, do, do the best we possibly can to come up with the best contract we possibly can with the most options at the lowest price. But that's a, a big undertaking, and I think the reason you see this as an advisory question is because rather than spending six or nine more months doing that, really drilling this down to a, the best contract we can possibly do, and then asking the citizens if we should do that, that's what this advisory question is about, is to direct us, do we go and enter into hard contract negotiations with an absolute for sure outcome, or do we not at this point? So for me, I, I think it's gotta go to the ballot. I'm, I'm in favor of that.
Okay. Ms. Pfeiffer?
So in addition to Ms. Miller's points, I agree it's for us to make that decision. Here's, here's why. One, it's a difficult, and it's difficult to do a proper communication, education of this matter with all the information we've gotten, and then somehow it'll get out to the voter who, this day and age, I don't know, will spend the time to research the same level we have. You know, they kinda look at probably what, if they don't understand it, it's easy to say no, but that impacts a lot of our community. We have had several surveys and several discussions that are quantifiable, that says, hey, we should be doing this. They keep asking for us to do it over and over, and we keep, keep kicking the can. Real quick, real quickly, I Googled while we're sitting here, what cities provide municipal trash? I'll show you, funny enough, my hometown, El Paso, Albuquerque, Seattle, Denver, Golden, Grand Junction, Mobile, Alabama, Missouri City, Texas, Pleasant Hill. It's just, and there's just pages and pages and pages. This is the first community I've ever lived in where you choose your own trash. So it's not consumer choice, it's just, it's municipal trash has been where the city, we're not even asking the city to do it, we're actually gonna contract it out. But most cities have their own logo on the side of their car, or their, their vehicles, and they're doing trash as a public health perspective. So, to me, it's kinda weird to live in a city who, for, well, when I moved here in ninety-two, how weird it was to pick your own trash. Never heard of that. We even had a discussion this weekend with my family from Seattle, how they thought it was completely weird that we, we, you, you choose your trash company? And then also, here's the thing, you know, if, if the voters say yes, we may not do it. If the voters say no, then we may still act on it. So it's, that alone creates confusion. And even, I just quoted Mr. Marriott saying that we shouldn't be promising if we're not gonna deliver. Well, we're not promising anything on an advisory question. So are we just confusing the voters even more by putting on something that we should be acting on? I almost think about affordable housing then, when you talk about kicking the can in nine months of discussion, because we've had three years of discussions, but yet the citizens expect us to make those decisions. I, I don't think that this is as elevated as affordable housing, but it's an important matter for our citizens. So, I really think that we need to not put it on the ballot, and we need to make the decision that we've been elected for, to make these decisions.
Ms. Ford?
Well, from the very beginning, I was in favor of us making the decision, 'cause I really do think it is our decision to make, because everyone, the, the one thing about this topic that's different from all consumer choice is that all of us have waste that we have to get rid of. It's just like all of us need water, all of us need gas, all of us need electricity. This is not a, you know, unusual problem for some. It's not like I, I'm going into the department store and I have choice of what I'm gonna purchase. We all need it, it's a service that everybody needs. And it's a service that affects our environment, and it affects our financials, because I really do believe that it is affecting our streets. And that's a major problem that we have in our city. And the other thing that really is uncomfortable for me is that we do have this, you know, two-thirds that would be involved in the program, one-third that wouldn't be involved in the program. We know that our voting record is not always reflective of everyone in the community, it's whoever gets out and votes. And so I have a problem with that. I'm, I feel a lot more comfortable with a survey than I do with voting. So, where I struggle with this is, is that I'm very pro citizen feedback, and I like to hear pros and cons from citizen feedback. But I really do feel that it is a decision that we should make as a council, because it's an important, it is an important decision, and I think that it would be a very, very favorable thing to do, to be a leader in this area on this topic. And so therefore, I'm much more comfortable making the decision than I am putting it out for a vote because of the fact that it, it doesn't affect everybody, and we know that not everyone's gonna go out and vote. And I don't even know, Kristin, do you know what the voting record is for Arvada generally in our, this is an election year, generally, what percentage of our population votes in an, in a, an election year?
I'd have to look it up.
Okay.
I could try and do it right now.
It's all right, I, that was off the cuff, I didn't expect you to-
Mr. Jones?
Are you finished? Just wanna make sure. Just wanna ask Mr. Devon a question, and maybe this is better for Mr. Archer, but since December, how much money have we spent studying this with the consultants and so on and so forth?
Since, I'm sorry, since-
Since December, since really the question, well, since we've hired somebody to help us navigate through this, whenever that might be.
About ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand dollars? Okay. I just couldn't remember. Well, I'm intrigued that Ms. Ford, you like, you like surveys better than voting. It seems like-
Excuse me, I, (laughing) no, I actually think everyone should get out and vote. But we know that that's not the case, though.
Right. So, this really goes back for me a couple of years ago, and Rachel Smallwood, sorry if I put you on the spot here for a second, but it was at her City Hall 101 graduation where we had a conversation about this. And she asked me the question then, would I support a ballot question? And I can't remember, it was two years ago, I think. And I believe that year, we were asking a different ballot question, it wasn't three F. And my response to you then, I think, was, well, I'd, I'd like to learn and understand it better, but I'm really hoping that we can get this other ballot question on and, and approved. And so I didn't wanna muddy the water, as it were. And so, I, I know that Rachel and a lot of people have been thinking about this for a very long time. This has been something that Ms. Miller's been talking about since the day she was elected, and she reminds us of that all of the time. But, you know, as, as we've gone through the conversation, I've been open to, to the feedback and to, and I, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say- and I, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say, thank you to the Sustainability Committee. You've done an amazing job of kind of unearthing, no pun intended, this question and, and what is it that we should be doing? So I really appreciate the work of the committee. Coming into the night, I was thinking, well, you know, why wouldn't I vote for this, you know, to be on the ballot? And then, Mr. Mormon, your, your comment caught me off guard a little bit. Just from the sense of, well, maybe we should hit the pause button. Because, you know, as I listen to my colleagues talk about us making the decision, I don't know that any of us could make the decision today. Because I don't know that we have clear facts. I don't know that we really truly understand the impacts to the citizenry. I don't know that we truly understand, and I appreciate the gentleman, the engineer. I appreciate your, your thoughts and your comments on the, the load of a vehicle. I think this is a really big question. And, yeah, I think that we could make this decision. But I also think that the citizens can make a decision as well with a question that is clear and concise. But I don't even know if this question is clear and concise. To give them, to give the citizenry all that they need to know to make an informed decision. I don't think that, based on this, if I were to vote on it, I don't think I could make an informed decision, because, well, one, I'm in an HOA and so I pay 30 bucks a month right now for all of my HOA services. So let's just say that my trash is 10 bucks, trash and recycling. No, I don't get, I don't get bulky pickup and I don't get composting. Those aren't offered to me. But I'm not confident, again, to, going back to Rachel's comments about, don't make me go out and talk about this when I really don't know what to talk about. Because the first question that anybody ever asks is, well, what's it gonna cost me? It's gonna cost you more, is probably the right answer. Because if, again, using my experience or my neighborhood of $30 a month and estimating that it costs 10 bucks, it's gonna cost you more. Based on the pricing that I saw, it's, we're not doing the citizens of Arvada any service by providing them with service that's going to cost them more, when I think what we're hearing and what we saw in the survey is, I want it to cost less. So I'm really conflicted on putting this on the ballot. I would actually be in favor of hitting the pause button. And, which is why I asked the question, how much money have we spent to date? We spent about $10,000. And understanding this more, again, because I think we're, we're, it feels like we're putting the cart before the horse in asking a question that we don't have any answers to. I think the RFP process was, these are my words, faulty. I think we made it too big and grand. We didn't keep it simple. We didn't ask a concise question. And so we got back a bunch of data points that we couldn't interpret for council to even make a decision. So, you know, again, I don't think we're doing anybody any favors by rushing this. And it feels like there's some kind of rush behind it and I don't know why. And, you know, if, if it takes another two years, takes another six months, I, I don't know. I don't know what we learn in six months. I don't know if there's, if, if we can get any closer on pricing. If we can redo the RFP, if we can ask a better question. So, Mr. Mayor, I don't, I'm really confused and conflicted on the direction. I don't think council can make the decision, because we don't have enough information. And I don't think the citizenry can make the decision, because they don't have enough information.
Yeah. I'll, I'll chime in as well, from the perspective that, Mr. Jones, I, I really hear where you're coming from. Frankly, based upon the RFPs we've received thus far, I'd have to, as a council member, I'd have to vote no. Just because the, the cost figures are not where I thought and hoped they would be. Now, can those get drilled down? Can, you know, whoever we enter into negotiations with get us down to a lower price? But, you know, I forget what the percentages were, but I was amazed at the percentage of people who would pay more. And, and I think those people would not be very happy with us for doing this. I expected the RFP to come in at a price where we were gonna be able to say, you know, everybody's gonna be able to save money doing this. And, and frankly, I, I was hoping that, wanting that, because I'm certainly hearing the value of, you know, reduced track, traffic, getting the landfill not as full. All those things that the, the Sustainability Committee and everything has, has lauded with this are all good things to laud and that we ought to be supportive of. But this is the classic where I think people vote with their pocketbook and we don't have good pocketbook information for them. And so for me personally, I'm not prepared to say that, you know, we as a council are ready to take this on and, and say, yes, definitively, we're going to do this because we've got a price that, that's good for our folks. And I'm, I'm troubled with putting it to a vote of the people, right? First of all, I would prefer a vote of the people if we had good information. Because why would we not wanna listen to our citizenry in a vote, giving us good information as to, to making a decision? But we don't have the right information to put out to, to people right now, from my perspective on this. And the, the only reason I would go forward with a vote is because I don't wanna keep kicking the thing down, down the road. But then, you know, are we gonna get a faulty result back from our citizenry in a vote by not having the right information? You know, I'd rather, I'd rather pause, get decent information to go to the citizens with, rather than put forward a question where there's so many questions that they're just automatically gonna vote no. Because I think that's a false no. But if people have good information, then they can make an educated decision. So I, I'm, I'm hearing where you're coming from. I guess where I'm at right now is, even though I don't wanna, you know, I was here in 2011, as was, was Mr. McGough, when we dealt with this before, and I was more than willing to have this discussion again this year. I'm just not happy with the information we've gotten from the, from the RFP process. And I'm not gonna put the blame on anybody with that. I think we were trying to get as much information as we could. But the, the results of that information are not as nice as I would like them to be. So I'm inclined to say, let's, let's get better information to be able to go to the citizenry with. And frankly, if the information was so conclusive that this is gonna be a huge savings, then I would be more comfortable with council deciding it. So, Mr. McGough?
Thank you. I appreciate all the, the comments from the various council members, because it helps to inform my judgment. And I too am conflicted with it. I fully agree with the perspective put forward by Mr. Marriott, that this is a significant and wide-ranging issue and that we could be well-served to get the, the voice of, of our citizens. I worry a little bit less than has been voiced by others about the, those not involved casting a vote. In every election, there's what they call undervotes, where people vote for certain parts of the ballot and don't vote for other parts of the ballot. I suspect a lot of those who would not be affected at all are saying, what is this? And pass it by. So I'm not, I'm not as worried about the influence of the unaffected people in the ballot question outcome. But there are the, first of all, the first thing, we are dealing with it as a council. We are making a decision. At this point, it's almost like the preliminary decision. Do we put it out to the ballot issue or are we gonna make the final decision? And I've been inclined, because of the persuasiveness of other council members in the past, to go with a ballot issue. But I hear what the, what others are saying tonight, that it really ought to be a council decision. And I guess I could perhaps live with that if I got a sense of, if it were to be, if we were to hit the pause button and it were to come back to the council for action, when could that happen? Would it be within the next two months? Or would it be beyond that time?
Do you have an opinion? Just kidding.
I have a stake in that question. While they're checking on that, I would just like to say, it's, I also share the mayor's judgment that a delay is problematic too. It's been an issue for, longer, long before 2011. The issue had been floated before the council for a couple of decades at least to say, should we enter into some kind of agreement for an organized trash hauling system? So it's been there for a very long time. And a delay, particularly as Mr. Jones conjectured, six months or two years, that would be a very long time. So that's why I'm wondering how long it might really take if it were to be a, a council decision after getting more information, whether we're talking about a reasonably short time or whether we're at the far end of that conjecture of a, a year or two down, down the road.
Go ahead, Mr. Fiver.
While we're on a commercial break. You know, I was just gonna answer your vote. If I recall correctly, and I'll look to Kristin, but I think only like 25, 30% of our population votes, so it's about 30,000 to 40,000 voters.
2017, it was 30,000, or 30%.
30%. So you're looking at 30% of our population making a decision for two-thirds of our population. Even if they all voted and there was no undervote. So, I mean, when you start looking at the numbers about surveys or voters making influence stuff, you're, no matter what, whatever, and it's not even a decision, it's an advisory question. No matter what, you have a very smaller population making a decision for a very larger population, which this happens all the time, but, you know, I, I wanna make sure that, one concern I have is, are we confusing our population with a question that is not binding? And so I get worried about that.
Could I just say to that, that, that small number of voters has certainly exercised good judgment in placing each of us at this time?
And had much confidence in us to make decisions like this.
Ouch. One last thing, real quick. Great, great, great points, everybody up here. And then those listening at home, keep that in mind. Pricing negotiation, I know that the mayor's made a, a comment about that. And I think, if I recall, Jessica, our discussion there was, we didn't really have time to negotiate really firm or good pricing or anything. It was more of a spaghetti on the wall pricing was thrown from the, there was no really fine tuning of, of, we got whatever we got, right? It was, it just seemed like it was like first swag. It was not even best effort or anything on pricing.
That's correct. So we put a lot of different options out there. So this was the first sort of blush at pricing. In order to negotiate, we would choose one hauler to start negotiations with. And that's where we would start to refine the program, the different components of the program. And then we would ask for a best and final offer on pricing from there, once we've refined the program. So that, that's where we're at at this point.
The volume of, you know, households on that pricing. So, I mean, I think there's still option for it to go way down. I just wanted to, to say that. The numbers we saw were not, were not really refined.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would, to, to cap, to capitalize on what Jessica just mentioned. Well, first of all, this was one doozy of a curveball that the city council threw at us, but that's okay. We're, we're, we're ready, we were ready for it, kind of. I think the issue is that we could certainly go and, and, and conduct negotiations on a last best and, and final offer. But the process to do that, to draft an ordinance, to have first reading and second reading, is going to take more than two months. It will, it will take us through the month of October and into November. So I, I don't wanna make a promise that I don't think we can keep. And it will take some time to, to do that. And to give you numbers that you would, would have confidence in are very accurate numbers. So I, I, I think for us to make a commitment that we could get this done within the next two months would not be a commitment that we could 100% for sure fill. It will take longer time than that in order to get that kind of information to you and give you the opportunity to, to make that decision. So we would certainly have to bypass the, the place in this ballot on, this measure on the ballot and then also bypass the election. We would have to go, you know, past the time when a new council would be seated.
Okay. Ms. Ford?
I would like to ask the council if, you know, in addition to getting information from the, a waste hauler, if in, in addition to that information, it would be important to you in terms of decision-making to get information on the costs currently with having multiple waste haulers in terms of road damage? Even though we can't quantify the annoyance of multiple trucks on a street, that's still a cost. It's not an economic cost, but there is a, you know, well-being, life, you know, what do you call it?
Quality of life.
Quality of life situation. Would you be willing to receive some of that information as well if we were to make the decision as a body?
Okay. Ms. Marriott, you wanna speak to that?
Sure. I'd like to answer Nancy's question. I think it's a good, I think it's a good question. There's a couple of things about this that if we as a council were gonna try to make this decision, we're short on information. One is, number of trash trucks driving around town. Because this program from day one adds 50% to the amount of trash truck miles being driven in the city of Arvada, because recycling, curbside recycling pickup becomes mandatory every other week and those trucks are gonna drive around. And then on the other side, there will certainly be some miles not driven by having multiple hauling companies driving around. But we don't have any information from our engineering department or public works or anything to tell us how that settles out. So that's a piece of information I would certainly be missing to be able to, to be able to make this decision. The other is, of course, cost. We have preliminary costs. That's all we have. The preliminary costs show that it's most likely gonna be more expensive for more people than it will be cheaper for. And so without tighter that, I, I, I certainly need better information there if I'm gonna make this decision as a council person. I think for citizens to raise their costs on themselves is what they can do and should do if that's what they choose to do. But for us to impose additional costs on residents without knowing for sure what, what the costs are, is the part I can't do. That's why I couldn't make this decision at this time. Because I would be in effect, taking some of my neighbors who are on fixed incomes. They, they spend their last $10 every month from their social security check or retirement check or whatever on the necessities of life. But yet we might impose higher costs on them with a program like this. Again, if they want to vote to do that to themselves, I'm totally okay with that. But I'm not okay with me doing that to them. And so I think that's another, another one that, that there has to be enough information for us to be able to make, make that decision. And so those are the two that stick out to me the most right off the bat. But yeah, I think, I think that's where it's at for me.
Mr. Jones?
I would just add, oops, sorry. I would just add to kind of the list of questions. You know, right now, we're speculating the number of HOAs. And so we would need to look at the number of HOAs who don't offer trash hauling and those who offer trash hauling who don't offer recycling. I think we have to have, again, going, I think Mr. Marriott said it, it's, we've gotta have better data points for ourselves to make this decision. And so I think tagging along with what you're saying is, we need to rely upon the team here to, to gather.
here to, to gather all of those data points, and maybe we need some more community input on what additional data points are, so that we can make a good decision. I don't doubt that we can't. We make good decisions all the time, but this one is creating conflict because we don't have all the data points. And so I think, so I appreciate your question, yes. I would absolutely appreciate a thorough study from our public, our Public Works Department and from, you know, all of the stakeholders as it relates to impacts to the city. So thank you for the question.
Mr. McGough?
The comments now seem to be saying that we as a council don't have all the information we need to make a decision. That would seem to suggest that we ought not to refer to the voters. If we're saying, we don't understand all the issues and all the implications and ramifications at this point, it would seem persuasive that it shouldn't go to the larger citizenry to give us their thoughts on the questions that we can't really define. So perhaps that is the best way, is to make a commitment that the council will make the decision, and trying to get some kind of date certain for, or a date projected for making that kind of decision, and getting that list of, you know, getting the information for those various data points. So I had been more in favor of getting, putting it on the ballot as an advisory question, but I think it should be, I'm persuaded now it should be a council decision, and my only regret is that I would not be here to assist you in that process.
Mr. McGough, you would certainly be welcome back at a public hearing on that topic.
I do have your email addresses. And phone numbers.
Ms. Miller?
And I know where you live.
Yes. Ms. Miller?
I agree with you wholeheartedly. If we could get that pricing before the election so that Mr. McGough could participate, that would be great.
Ms. Marriott?
I just want to make a comment. Mr. McGough, you made a, a statement there that if the council were willing to commit to make this discussion, make this decision if they had more information, not willing to commit to that at all. I think, I think-
I mean a commitment just in the sense of, you know, a statement of intent, that, you know, we're going to try to get this done relatively quickly, as opposed to, we'll consider it in the buy and buy. So I'm not looking at a specific date in that sense.
So, so I'd be more than happy to make the commitment to continue to look into this, but I, I still come around back to, this is such a very large change in the way that we do business, that citizens in Arvada do business, that I would not ever agree to not have the option that this go to a vote of the citizens. Now, with proper information, where I feel like I can make a, an informed vote, I may be also willing to have the council decide it, but, but, but I would be willing to commit that we continue to look at it and try to get somewhere. But we, depending on what that yields, we may very well end up right here next year, same time, same place, talking about whether it goes on the ballot or not, and I certainly would not be willing at this point to say I wouldn't do that.
I think we wind up with a new council after November, so even if we made the statement
Correct.
Wouldn't have any effect on the incoming council.
Yeah. Mr. Pfeiffer?
Well, we can easily make a motion to say that our intent is to make the decision for, or council to make the decision on organized trash, pending full review and everything else doesn't mean we're going to go with it, but could easily make a motion. Just needs four votes.
Can I second that motion? I'll vote right now.
Okay. I'm wondering to what extent, I want to keep this process moving forward. Very clearly, you know, I think we've got strong direction that we want to keep this moving forward. I wonder if we want to authorize our team to go get the best, you know, to start negotiations for the best price, so that at least we have that information to either then say, are we going to go to a special election at some point, or are we going to make the decision as a council? Yes?
Yeah, no, I think-
Mr. Jones?
Just to follow up on that, so the, the comment that you made, Mr. Devon, about kind of getting the last and final, so what does that look like? What does that process involve?
It would, it would involve a process where we go to the, to what the, our team evaluates as the best proposal, and conduct a hard negotiation process to get the last, best, final offer that we would feel comfortable bringing forward to the city council to discuss.
So is that just, are those negotiations with one hauler, or is that with several haulers and then?
It could be with one hauler, it could be with more than one hauler. If, as we analyzed the proposals, we felt that there was one that was not, was not acceptable. There are another three that I felt we, that our team felt we could continue to work with. And so we would have to work among those three and then, and probably drill down with just one of those to try to get the last, best, and final offer.
Okay. So, Mr. Attorney?
Can I jump in really quickly?
Yeah.
So many times what we'll do is pre-qualify, or as Mr. Devon just said, eliminate ones that don't qualify, and that could lead us with one or up to as many as four that we would include and would be a part of the best and final. And so sometimes it's one, sometimes it's two, sometimes it's multiple, but any of them that would be in that would have to be able to meet all of the minimum qualifications, and then they, excuse me, could be a part of it.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
No, that does. And the reason why I ask is because I, at the last workshop, I remember some, there was a hauler in the audience that said, well, I wasn't a part of this. And so I'm assuming that maybe they didn't fit the criteria.
It would only be the ones that submitted during the last RFP process that could be eligible. So if a hauler did not submit, they would not be eligible for this process either.
Okay. All right. So yeah, I would agree that, well, I would, I would respectfully ask council to give direction to, to the team to, to get that pricing.
And as part of that direction, would we then determine, we, what are the services that we're looking for in terms of a quote? Because we've already talked about, you know, well, we really didn't talk about composting. I mean, we, I think we have to make a decision on what services we would want to be asking for, for our citizens.
I would lean on, I would lean on the team to give direction on that, that we could then provide input on, but that's just my two cents.
I'm okay with that.
Do you want to make that as a motion?
So if we can go back and roll the tape. Yes, I would move that whatever I said about that.
I think I'd like it a little clearer than that.
I'm just looking at the city attorney.
May I, may I, how about if I take a shot at this?
Thank you.
I believe that the council would like to give us direction to go back and, and review the proposals in order to develop a last, best, final offer that we would bring forward to the city council for further consideration.
So moved.
Okay. Does everybody understand the motion?
I think we're, yeah.
Yep. Okay, all votes are cast, and this would obviously be in lieu of going to the ballot with a question this November, right?
Right.
Okay. I'm going to speak to the motion. From my perspective, if we went to the citizens with the language that we agreed to tonight, because it doesn't have good pricing information, I believe that the citizens of Arvada, or a plurality, whatever, greater than 51 percent would vote no. And I don't think that that's fair from the perspective of having good information, full information for our citizens to consider. I think we need to get the best possible price so that we can then educate our citizens, which will go one of two ways. We either would then do an election, and frankly, if we did an election, I wouldn't want to wait for two years. I'd want to do a special election, which has costs involved, but if, if the majority of council wanted to go that way. But the other alternative is, if we've got good information, and those who are in favor and those who are opposed can come to a public hearing, it may be a three-night ordeal, but at least we would have good information that we would be relying upon to make a decision. I don't think we've got that good information now for either the city council, as, as Mr. McGough has correctly pointed out, if, if we don't have good information, then the citizens don't have good information to make a decision. And so that's why I will be supporting the motion. That passes seven to zero. So we are not going to go on the ballot. We are going to direct staff to frankly come up with the best price so that we can have that for consideration as we move forward. But I think, speaking for me, and I think speaking for the entire council, the council has a mandate, and I think our team has a mandate, that we are not going to keep kicking this down the road, because I think that there are issues that need to be addressed with this that I don't want to keep have, hanging around for any longer. And that's why I agreed, when even having the battle scars of dealing with this issue back in 2011, it was appropriate to relook at this. I appreciate the work by the Sustainability Committee and others who have been involved in this to advise us, and I think that the input we got from citizens tonight as to why not to go on the ballot right now was, was relevant and important, but that none of us have the information that we can make a decision tonight for a final decision. So, but we can certainly get our team to get us much better information. Mr. Pfeiffer?
So I just have a question for you, Mayor, or staff. Do we, for point of order, do we need to still vote on what's on the agenda?
Yes.
Since we kind of went way off track? Okay.
Legal counsel, competent legal counsel has advised us, so I would entertain a motion as to the resolution that's on. Mr. Pfeiffer, do you want to make that?
So should I do it in the negative?
Yes.
Let's see here, hold on. I move that Resolution 19 dash 074, a resolution referring, an advisory question on organized waste hauling to the electors of the city of Arvada, or city, on the November 5th, 2019, regular municipal election ballot be rejected.
All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero, I think for the reasons that we've all talked about as to why we are not going to go to the ballot on it. Okay. Let's do a quick stretch in place. Thank you all for your participation. We've got a workshop item on the land development code that we'll go to next. We've been, we've been advised, counseled by our communications team that someone's cellphone up here is causing a little bit of an issue, so if you can get them either shut down or pull. Okay. We're reconvened at 7:53. Now we're going to have a discussion about the land development code.
And Mr. Mayor moves the council, Rob Simontana will lead this discussion.
Very good.
All right. And given the point we are in the evening, I was going to go through it page by page, word by word, but, no, no, okay. All right. Well, I'll try and go as quickly as I can through here, while hitting the high points here. So we are talking about the first draft of the land development code that was introduced to you this week, and I know probably you haven't had much of a chance except to kind of flip through it. So I'll try and hit everything at kind of that 30,000-foot level, and then we'll have several months here where we've got time for the public to comment and for modifications to be made. And we do anticipate that this will probably be, you know, the first of several iterations of the document. So just a quick look at where we are. We're getting near the end, but we, and we will have an open house coming up here in September to introduce this document to the public, but wanted to go through, you know, kind of where we started at the beginning of this process in 2017, and we identified six items that we wanted to try and accomplish with this new code. And we've, at this point, believe we've managed to get through five of those six items by making sure this implements the city's comprehensive plan, that it implements the city council's strategic results, that it's updated, simplified, and modernized, and that we've streamlined the development review process, and hopefully made it easier to understand and use. And then the last piece that we're just starting to get into is remapping the city into the various new zone districts. Let's get that one. So, you know, in terms- one. So, you know, in terms of the document itself, we tried to put it in a logical structure that someone, just picking it up, could understand how they progress through the document, to determine what they can do with their property, or how a piece of property can be developed, and what the process is. So, really, you start out with, from kind of the bigger picture, the zone districts. You know, what is my property zoned, and what can I do on it in terms of setbacks, and height, and bulk standards, and landscape requirements? And then what are the uses that are permitted on that property? Then, following that, it gets into the design issues. So, kind of the horizontal environmental and site design, and then building design, what does my building have to look like? And then finally, what kind of approval is necessary to do what I want to do? So I'll just briefly walk through the various chapters. First one is just preliminaries, kind of establishes the purpose and authority of the code, talks about the effective date when we get to that point, and has transitional provisions for cases that may already be under review at the time we do adopt the new language. Second chapter is the zone districts. So we will establish several new zone districts, and also adopt the floodplain maps, as we have in the code today, as part of the zone districts. And the idea here is to identify zone districts with the purpose and relationship to the comprehensive plan, the dimensional standards, a housing palette for residential development types. We're keeping the form-based code, that's the Old Town Zone District, and it has references to make it easier for someone who's looking at a zone district, to understand the other regulations that apply within those zone districts. We would be, as mentioned, replacing all of our current zone districts with new zone districts. And this page just kind of lists those new zone districts, and what they would be replacing. Essentially, probably the biggest one that most people are interested in is the RN zoning, the residential neighborhood zone district, which would really replace a lot of the zone districts that we have today in the existing developed portion of the city, where we have a lot of RSL, small lot, RL, standard lot, a lot of PUD districts that are zoned residential. This district would kind of blanket those areas, and would have various sub-districts related to the lot sizes of the various subdivisions throughout the city. It would also allow for a little bit of flexibility in terms of expansion beyond what we have in our code today, for additions to existing homes, and accessory buildings that may be allowed on a lot. It's a little more lenient in terms of lot coverage. For new residential development, we would have zone districts that are related to densities around the city, and not so much on a particular use of, residential use. So we would have R6, R13, and R24, which relate to densities, 6 being a maximum of 6 units per acre, 13, 13 units per acre, 24, so on. But within those districts, there would be a palette of housing options that could be developed. If in a R13, or let's say in R6, somebody wanted to, they had an acre and wanted to develop a single townhome building, they could take those 6 units, put it in a townhome building, but that would leave a lot of space as open space on the property. So it allows for some trade-offs versus that type of development, or 6 standard, single-family lots. There's also several mixed-use zone districts that we've incorporated. Anything from a neighborhood scale, which would be smaller-scale development that we can envision along Ralston Road, similar to what we have, that maintains sort of a residential character, but could allow a variety of uses, up to mixed-use transit, which would be our most intense development that would be allowed around transit facilities. And then, as I mentioned, the housing palette is in this section as well, which would have all the dimensional standards related to the various types of housing that could be developed. We've looked at similar elements that are in the code today, but tried to simplify them a little bit. We have setbacks from arterial streets in our code today, that relate to both residential and commercial development. We're not, we don't believe there's a need to keep those large setbacks of 100 feet for commercial development. And for residential development, we've very often revised those setback standards down to 100 feet from 150 feet in a number of PUDs. And so this would just kind of codify that reduction. We have some setback exceptions and height exceptions, which are in our code today. Those would transfer over. The height transition, we've talked about at previous workshops, and the intent there is really just to simplify how that's calculated, to make it easier than the bulk plain requirements that are in our code today. We're looking at height incentives that could be utilized to allow for affordable housing in a number of the mixed-use zone districts. That's an area that we still need to spend a little more time on, and come back with you with a very specific proposal. And then, requirements for lot area and lot width modifications are described in that section of the code. One item that we did talk about at the May 10th, or I'm sorry, the June --
Mr. McGough's got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Yes, I do have a question on the zoning districts, as we finish up that section.
Sure.
One of our goals, I believe, or one of the things we were striving for, is the reduction in the number of development projects that would need to come before the Planning Commission and the city council, because we would have simplified zoning districts and so forth, and thereby allowing them to be reviewed administratively. Can you give us a sense of how much that might improve, or how many more might be handled administratively with, under the new zoning districts when they're completed?
Yes. So, of all the zone districts that are there, they would all become typically administrative review cases, unless it's something, a use would require a conditional use, or somebody was proposing a development that was truly unique, and would still require PUD zoning. So there's a couple of instances where there would still be public hearings involved. But we anticipate the vast majority of development that would develop under these new zone districts could be approved administratively.
So, vast majority, meaning perhaps three-quarters of them, or even more?
I think that's probably a good number.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. McGough, could I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
What's our typical timeline now? And if we go to an administrative approval process for three-quarters of the development, what would be the new timeline that you would expect?
So today, if you had a typical PUD zone district, you'd be looking at about four months for the preliminary development plan, a similar timeline for the final development plan. So, and then there's time in between those, as the applicant is refining their plan between preliminary and final. So, you know, you are looking at sometimes up towards a year for the review. With an administrative case, that would be treated as we do a site plan today, which is just a final review with final plans and construction documents kind of taking place at the same time. And right now, our timing on those is about 20 to 22 weeks.
Thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yeah, I have a quick, so question. I want to make sure I didn't miss something. So when you say administratively approved, that means no variances to any of these?
That's correct. That would be a case --
Any variance request would still have to come in front of the Planning Commission and us?
Well, if it was a variance request, it would go before the Board of Adjustment. But there would be a public hearing on that. These would be cases --
So, exceptions, I think, is what you're talking about.
Well, I'm trying to figure it out right now, because they're talking about 2/3, or 75% of what we hear, would be handled administratively. I'm trying to understand what exceptions, or rules, or whatever you're doing, when are we going to see it? I just don't, I don't want to take away the public's opportunity to weigh in on a property issue, or zoning issue, when it's done administratively.
Right. So if it's done, if it were to be processed administratively, it would be a case, it would be a project that would meet all of the requirements of the zone district that it was going to be located in. So it would meet all the setbacks, all the height, would be building design standards.
So how would they want a different height, and the setback's too close? Then what's the next step?
Then those, then that would be a process where they would most likely have to go to some other, either a PUD process, or ask for a variance. And the variance would be, you know, a public hearing before the Board of Adjustment.
So we will never see those?
Typically, you don't see those today. You see modifications under the PUD district. But if it's a request to modify a standard zone district, that's a variance case before the Board of Adjustment. So one thing we did discuss at the June 10th meeting, was how to look at some heights for the area south of Old Town, along Wadsworth and Wadsworth Bypass. And we had some discussion on the potential heights there. And when we had our advisory committee meeting on these heights, there was some disagreement with the advisory committee wanting to look at heights that were lower in the areas directly south of Grand View in this area. So that's something we will want to spend a little more time on as we move forward, and really kind of get some more public thought on that, or if the council has some thought tonight. But I just wanted to kind of put that out there for the council, so they were aware of the advisory committees.
Mr. Marriott?
So I just have a quick question on that. This is obviously one of the things that generated the most interest, or most kind of discussion by us, and I would assume with the Citizens Advisory Committee as well. What's the process going forward to nailing this down? Is this going to be it, unless there's requests for more discussion, or is there some plan for how you're going to get this refined of what it's actually going to be? Because this, to me, is one of the more, you know, one of the things of more interest that's in here.
Sure. Well, we're certainly going to talk about this at the, or have this information available at the open house that we'll have in September. We'll also have the opportunity for public comment on the draft after it's released on September 12th. And so there will be opportunity, and then from there, we will really judge on what kind of input we're getting. And we will be coming back to you in December, as we get further through the process of drafting the ordinance. And so at that point, we can certainly, depending on what we hear, we can certainly have that discussion in more detail.
Can you, or staff could do this, can we maybe just start a little punch list, or a little list of things to revisit? And I think the process is good, having the public look at it and comment on it, and the advisory committee look at it and comment on it. But just some kind of process where we make sure that we revisit this, regardless of what the outcome of those two things are. So I don't know if we want to start a list of just interested items, that we want to really make sure we revisit before we just approve it.
Okay. I would like to really add to that, too, because I think that, you know, having listened to the comments in the advisory meeting, and actually, not to correct you, but I have to, because it was July 25th, it was the night before I went on vacation, that we met, and that was brought up. And in my opinion, it drew a lot of, a lot of comment that night. And I think that, you know, this is an area that I have personally struggled with, is the vision for Old Town. And I think that this is directly, this whole issue of the height and density, as it relates to Old Town, is an issue, because I, you know, I hear it in the Old Town bid, I hear it in a lot of different conversations that I have. And I think that it would really be nice to kind of go back over and look at our documents, and determine what it is that we're trying to accomplish in Old Town. Because it seems to me, there's, you know, one faction that wants to develop Old Town to be different. There's another faction that wants to keep Old Town the way it is currently, because that seems to be what is driving people to Old Town, is that uniqueness of what we have right now. And it's an issue that I don't know if we truly have settled as a city with our citizens, and if there's truly an understanding of what is the direction for Old Town now and into the future. Are we trying to develop Old Town to become an urban center, because we do have that train station there? Or are we trying to keep Old Town different from other urban areas? So, how can we address that?
But I do want to just clarify that, we aren't talking about changing any of the heights or anything in Old Town. This is just the area south.
No, I understand that, Rob, but it affects Old Town. And people who respond to that area, think of it as affecting Old Town. And so I really don't think that we can truly look at, just because we're crossing the railroad tracks, that it's not impacting Old Town. And I think that's really the discussion that we need to have as a city. Because I see a lot of conflict in what is going on currently in Old Town, and what people are saying. I hear a lot of comments, and not just from, you know, certain folks. I hear from a lot of different people. And I think as a city, we really need to talk about that. What really are we intending to do with Old Town? And is there something that we're not understanding as citizens? I know there were a lot of issues with RGD and so forth, but I think our citizens really need to have a good sense of where Old Town is going, because all these areas, this new town area that's across the tracks, is still affecting Old Town. And especially if we're talking about heights of 65 feet, that is impacting Old Town.
Okay. All right. We've definitely got that on the list of topics to circle back to.
More to come.
More to come. All right. And then, I just wanted to put the map out there that you saw a while back. It just kind of shows where the various mixed-use districts are conceptually located. So the darkest purple would be the MXT, the kind of red would be the MXU, potential areas. The orange is the MXS, which is suburban. And the yellow, which is probably really difficult to see up there, would be that MX and the neighborhood.
Mr. Marriott?
So, Rob, when we saw this last, there were, of course, maximum allowable building heights with some of these colors, or some of these zone districts. And I know those still exist, although they're not correlated here exactly on this map. I would suggest this is another one of those things to add to your list. When this came up last time, this is one of the areas with lots of, lots of discussion, lots of interest around it. So let's see what our advisory committee says, see what the citizens say, but let's make sure that this gets back to us in a forum where we can have a healthy discussion about it.
Sure.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yeah, and this is, this is, this is what freaks me out about us talking about getting rid of retail and commercial. Because if you look up in the Candellas, Indiana area, where they have mixed use, tells me that that was area that was supposed to be commercial and retail, and now mixed use is telling me it could be with residential, right?
That's correct. But most of the zoning up there today allows for residential use as well.
Even, it does? I'm looking.
Yes, a lot of it is zoned.
So everything south, or south of Candellas Parkway is residential?
There, there's not, it's a mix, allows for a mix of uses. It's PUD, a lot of it is PUD, business, professional, residential.
So why would you come to ask us to relook at that area? Regardless, the point is, is if there's changing of an area, especially a lot of open space that is zoned today, what I worry about maps like this is, hey, we're going to change this, we're going to add this, and we're going to do this. And then at the end of the day, we're like, wow, there's no more commercial property, because we had the whole, we've done it in piece part, and piecemealed it together. So I hope when we look at this, I'd like to understand what is the current use, what's the future use, and what is, what are we trying to do here? Because I really do think that having that orange up there on Indiana, and then with the conversations around the lake, and where the parkways go in and so forth, directly would concern exactly what I've been worried about, where everyone says, oh, the commercial's over there by Indiana. But here, it could easily become a mixed use with residential, when we already gave up all of the commercial opportunities east of there, or west of there. Does that make sense?
Yes, I certainly understand.
Like, tell me the whole story, basically, is what I'm saying. Don't give me a part of a story. Give me the whole story of these areas, because I'm a little worried that this looks great today, but tomorrow, we forget about what's happening around that lake. So can you highlight that in your notes?
Sure.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. So, that would be the Chapter 2 with relationship to zone districts. And Chapter 3 basically just talks about the uses that would be prevented in the various zone districts. And this is just an example table, to give you a feel for how those use tables look, which are very similar to what we have. which are very similar to what we have in our code today. The only difference is we've added another category in there. So you'd have, an A is a category which is just an allowed use. There aren't any specific standards related to that particular use other than the site design and building design standards. Then we would have a limited use, which may have some standards related to it in addition to the basic site planning and building design standards, but are things that could be handled at an administrative level. And then finally, the conditional use, which we have today, which those particular uses would require Planning Commission review and council approval for those particular land use, land uses. So it's in the document, there would be a reference to the specific pages and use types that would then detail what the various requirements would be, either for the limited use or the conditional use. And they would also be broken down potentially by the various different zone districts. Where something may be okay in one zone district, but we think it requires a conditional use in another zone district. So those would be identified. We would also have a temporary use section, which is, again, very similar to what we have today. And those are things like farmers' markets, food truck vending, those short-term events that happen from time to time in various areas of the city. And this just better defines it by putting them in a table where today it's just a long line of text that explains those uses. Chapter Three would also have use regulations for the business use of the home. So that would just identify a little bit better than what we have today as to what can be done as a home occupation.
Yes. Yes.
Rob, in terms of the use regulations for artists and their studios, has anything been changed on that at all?
We're still, yes. We've looked into that and we've tried to set some parameters for those things to occur. What we're still trying to figure out is how we can deal with noise impacts and try to dial that in. And do we just say our standard noise ordinance applies? Or is there some other level that may be acceptable? And so we still have not really dialed in those specific regulations.
Pennsylvania.
Would that be, excuse me, would that be any different than, where did I see it? You have something here about noise.
Yeah, I think it's the environmental, if you kind of look at that table on the right-hand side, there's the environmental impacts on the bottom of that page that talks about no offensive noise, vibrations, smoke, et cetera.
Oh, yeah, but you also had, let's see, I read it, you had it somewhere here where it was, you had an actual description of, oh, maybe that was it, let's see. I don't know, I think you had it, maybe it was in the, it had to do with the vibration, though, maybe that was it. All right, that might, that might be it. Because you described the noises somewhere in here. And when I read it, wherever it was, it seemed to me to, and you had a time restriction, too, wherever it was that I read it. And it seemed to me that that would pretty much take care of it.
Okay. Yeah, and the one other piece of that, too, is right now, home occupations are only allowed in the primary residence. The one modification that we have made that would allow for a little bit of expansion would be that you could have your art studio in your accessory, in an accessory building or in a detached garage, where today you can only have that type of use in your primary structure.
Okay, so that garage is still a part of that? That was, okay, good.
Mr. Jones.
So just going to the customer clients section. So if you recall, I'm really into yoga. And you can tell. So does this mean that if I put together a yoga class for my neighbors and they paid me because I'm really good at doing this, and they walked to my house, I could only invite two of them in at a time?
Yeah, that's the way it's written today.
And then, so under, it also includes home childcare? That also means I could only watch two kids at a time?
Well, home childcare is licensed and regulated in a different section of the code. And in that sense, you can have more children there, but you're still limited on the number of employees that you could have.
So why do we care how many people are in my yoga class?
Well, we've heard from the community that some people care and some people don't. So we're just trying to, try to find that balance that would make everybody happy.
So I might suggest on Mr. Marriott's note card, this come back as a future discussion.
Okay.
And I would encourage the committee to weigh in heavily on this.
Not just for your yoga class, but...
For yours?
No, I'm thinking more about, as an artist, I'm thinking about using a chainsaw to cut up, you know, logs and stuff and make art.
No, you can't do that.
Yeah, because of the vibration and the noise. Well, first of all, I don't have the talent, but second...
So, yeah.
And I would like to see Mr. Jones taking a yoga class.
So would my wife.
Okay, let's move along, please.
All right. So that's kind of it for Chapter Three. Chapter Four, again, is environmental and site design. So this is kind of the horizontal development parameters. So determining where you may have floodplains, where you may have topography that's acceptable or not acceptable for development. What are your subdivision standards in terms of roadway widths and lot dimensions and monumentation for subdivisions? And then site design in terms of landscaping, parking lot layout, parking lot island landscaping, those types of elements are included in Chapter Four, as well as parking and loading standards, fencing, exterior lighting. So it's a little bit of a mixed bag, kind of catch-all chapter, but it is everything that's horizontal as you're doing development. One item that we did talk with you about earlier this year was about how to deal with residential parking requirements and the need to address guest parking when it related to trying to figure out per-bedroom parking ratio versus a per-unit parking ratio. So after that discussion, we went back and looked at many, a bunch of other ordinances to figure out what their guest parking requirement was. And so we've revised those up a little bit to try and address the guest parking needs for, based on the various bedroom counts versus dwelling unit counts. So we did bump up the one-bedroom from 1.5 to 1.6 spaces per bedroom, two-bedroom from 2 to 2.1, and three, we did stay at the 2.5 spaces per dwelling unit for those three-bedroom units. And that seemed to get a fairly good amount of guest parking.
You're going to be shocked, but Mr. Marriott wants to talk about parking.
So again, again, I'm going to suggest that this is something we add to your list of things to make sure that your advisory committee weighs in on, the public weighs in on, and then we see and get to have a healthy discussion of, again, and particularly in this table, I think that the parking ratios that you say there are one. But the other one that I don't recall talking about and making a decision on, but it's on this table, is multifamily affordable is one parking space per dwelling unit. And I don't recall that being made as a decision. So that may very well be where it ends up, and that may very well what ends up in our land development code. But I think that's something we need to look into carefully before it just adds, ends up there by accident. So would you add that to your, your list of items for us to look into further? The other question then I have for you is the previous slide here, there's a statement on there, it's called parking credits and reductions.
I'm actually, I will actually get to that here.
You're getting there? Okay, sounds good. I'll wait for you to get there. But let's, I think that's, again, another one of the things, all of these parking requirements are things that generate lots of interest, have lots of potential impact to people who may have been there for a really long time. And we should not take this lightly. And we should make sure we get plenty of input from the advisory committee, the citizens as a whole. I think the Planning Commission should probably weigh in on this as well. And we should have a very robust discussion about it.
Certainly, yeah, certainly. On that, though, I do want to just mention that we, today in our code, we have a senior housing parking ratio that's actually one space per every two units. So that, what we tried to do there is to separate that out and say, there's a multifamily affordable component, and then there's this senior component. And that senior component is really about independent senior living. So we didn't feel the current of one space per two units made any sense. And so that's where we tried to break it up and think about two different ways of calculating.
I understand. I just think, I just think we have not had a robust discussion to decide these things yet. And we probably don't have enough information at our hands to be able to do that at this point. But if you guys can gather that up and make sure that we do get careful consideration of this before we adopt it, I think that's the right move.
Absolutely.
Mr. Jones.
Just really quickly, and this may be more of a question that you can't answer at this point, but I appreciate Mr. Marriott's comments on this. Oftentimes, when we have a multi-unit proposal before us, parking comes up and the distance of guest parking to doorsteps. I don't know how we solve that question or that problem, ensuring that, you know, guest parking is close to doorsteps. So again, it's, I don't know, and I don't even know if you can answer that question in this conversation, but I think something that I'd like to understand better from our planner's perspective.
Sure, and it is a little, it's a gray area, but we did write language into the code that talks about it being conveniently located throughout a site. So when it comes to a specific proposal, yeah, it kind of gets into gray areas, is that close enough? Is that not close enough? But we did try to put language into the code to address that issue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so parking credits. This would be just for the area surrounding Old Town, where we know we have an issue with parking today. And how do we accommodate any new development or redevelopment or even new uses in existing buildings? And so we met with our traffic folks and we have, we did go over this with our advisory committee just briefly the last time we did meet. And said, you know, here's one option that we can deal with. Because the way things are working today, it's kind of hit or miss in terms of how we deal with parking. So today, we can waive parking completely for a new use in an existing historic structure. So that's something that's on the table. And then we also have a fee in lieu that technically we can charge for parking within the Old Town area. But we've really never collected that fee and we don't have anything designated for the fee to go to if we did collect it. So it's a little bit of a catch-22 there. So we were trying to come up with an option that allows some flexibility in terms of providing some parking for development in Old Town or reuse, but also to allow flexibility for newer technologies or other options for parking reductions. So that would be about, you know, do you, does a particular site provide for spaces for Uber and Lyft drop-off and pickup? Does it have bike parking? Is there a vehicle share program in a particular project that could occur? Do they provide transit passes? So there would be a menu of different options. And then within specific areas around Old Town, as listed on this or shown on this conceptual map, a certain percentage of parking could be reduced to a certain point, to a maximum percentage reduction, depending on the type of alternative transportation options that a particular project or business would provide. So that would allow, you know, in the core of the Old Town area, a parking reduction potentially up to 40%, which is different than what we have today, where it's either 100% or we negotiate on a case-by-case basis to try and figure out how much parking should or could, would be required. And then a Zone B, which would be a little bit outside of that, would allow a lesser parking reduction. And then Zone C, the farthest, kind of out from the Old Town area, would be the least amount of parking reduction that would be available. But that would allow some flexibility in parking and also to deal with an issue that we are concerned about, that there's the potential that historic buildings or contributing buildings could be torn down and replaced with surface parking because the parking is necessary in the area based on the code. So we're just trying to walk a fine line about providing enough parking, but not require too much parking that could have unintended consequences.
So, Rob, quick question. So that's exactly when I see this, that's my question. Have we surveyed extensively enough to know that something like this wouldn't cause some unintended consequences, like make some buildings unable to be occupied by the things they're occupied by now or by, unable to be occupied by what would, by all other accounts would be an appropriate use except for a parking requirement? Do we know that there's not those unintended consequences? So that's question number one. And question number two would be, these parking credits or reductions, are these things that are proposed to be staff decisions or are these proposed to come to Planning Commission and City Council for decisions?
No, these would be proposed as a staff review, but we would have a menu. There would be a menu that would be in the code and say, if you do this, you can reduce your parking by this amount. If you do that, you can reduce your parking by that amount. So we would have that codified so that staff could make those decisions.
Okay. And is there, within the code, would there then be, if that's not able to be done, is there an appeal to, you know, Planning Commission and City Council for something like that? Or does that just become a, this is what it is, you comply, and that's it? And if that's the case, does that take any of the buildings in Old Town and essentially make them functionally obsolete because they can't achieve, even with these reductions, the ability to be used?
We have looked at it. We don't anticipate that being an issue. And these are, these are more geared towards accommodating potentially new development or reuse of an existing structure. But it is something that we've looked at. And there would almost certainly have to be a relief valve. Because there may be that one odd instance where it can't accommodate the parking in any way. And there would have to be an option for review to allow something different.
Like, it comes to mind that church on the southeast corner of Yukon and 57.
It's for sale right now.
That's for sale. And, you know, provides potentially lots of options for somebody who wants to take something like that on. But you'd hate to see something like this dramatically limit that to only fewer things if there's, unless there's some way for a prospective buyer to make an appeal beyond just a staff decision so that they can, you know, potentially do something creative. I mean, I just don't want to see us lose the ability in Old Town to be creative and to accomplish some things that we may not even know what they are yet. You know, that these types of regulations, to me, oftentimes feel like they foreclose on things we don't know about yet.
Sure. Definitely understand that. But what we're trying to do is to be more flexible than we have the ability to be today.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I have a question, Rob, about the Gold Strike Station on the east side of town. Is zoning there changing to allow for multifamily? And if so, do we need to consider some of these same parking credit-type situations so that we don't have single-family homes scraped for parking?
That area has always been planned as more of an office employment, transit-oriented development area. And we really don't anticipate that changing much. We would still anticipate having, allowing more of the commercial uses, which is what we allow there today. And the residential area to the north primarily would still be zoned residential.
All right. I was thinking sort of of that Simpson Methodist Church. There's been some discussion that that church may, may be in play for a multifamily there. And we, you know, the, it's an interesting area next to the, next to the transit station for that. But we may want to consider making those same type of allowances around that station as well.
We started linking it, yes. All right. All right, so it kind of went through all of this here. So the next chapter then is Chapter Five, which again is more about the vert- So the next chapter then is Chapter Five, which again is more about the, the vertical, the, the vertical appearance of a, a building. So this area would deal with the aesthetic consistency, it would tell you, you know, what is the appropriate realm of materials that could be built, what are your transparency requirements, a lot of things that are similar to our code today. Uh, it also includes, uh, the regulations for self-storage that we would like to bring back in, and that's the enclosed self-storage that we've kind of played around with, uh, in the past in PUD districts, they didn't work out quite as well. We think we can figure out a method to make them work a little better in this new code. Uh, that would be primarily putting those areas into the general commercial, uh, district, and then having a restriction on how close they can be to, uh, single-family detached houses. Uh, but you'll see that as you're looking through the code.
Yes, Ms. Ford?
Rob, I'm sorry, I wanted to go back to, um, under Chapter Four, um, the menu of potential reductions.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one of the questions I had was on number two, where it says up to 30% reduction with a peak frequency of 15 minutes or better, or so forth. What, what, what's gonna happen if for some reason, um, or would it happen, that, you know, we could do the reductions, and then maybe RTD changes a route or something, and then that could change the parking, you know, if, if that should happen? I mean, it, it has happened.
It certainly can happen. I think we're fairly confident that in the Old Town area where we're talking about this now, there's always gonna be transit service of some level, um, and it would be in one of those two categories, just given the park-and-ride situation and the density of, of people who are around this area. Uh, so I'm not sure in this particular area that that would be a big concern, but certainly if we were to try and apply this throughout the city, that could be a concern, but we, we weren't intending to try and apply it throughout the city.
Okay, so all of those things then in, um, Chapter Four relate to, um, Old Town? Is that?
Yes, so that, that area that we've conceptually mapped here, yeah.
Okay, all right, good, thanks.
Yeah, we wanted to keep it really kind of central focus, because we know transit can change over time in other areas, and that probably is not appropriate to apply citywide. All right, uh, one other item that we, uh, had not talked with council about in the, the past, but did touch, uh, with, touch on with our advisory committee, is the idea of, um, in some areas of the Newtown area primarily, and maybe there's a few other locations in the city, but areas where we really wanna try and activate the street, and we would then require, uh, a building to be designed for mixed-use development in primary, in key locations and along key streets to try and create a, that pedestrian environment, uh, extending beyond Old Town. So, uh, this is an example of, of what we were thinking in terms of the area in Newtown, where it would be appropriate to require any new buildings fronting on these particular streets to have an activated ground floor. That could mean it's, uh, has retail space or office space, it's designed to accommodate that, but maybe in the interim it's residential space, uh, and, or it could be, uh, amenities associated with a particular building. If it's a multifamily, that's the leasing office and the, the fitness facility. Uh, but something to, that really creates a more interesting streetscape than the blank walls that we sometime get, sometimes get with, uh, commercial or mixed-use development. So this is just one of those ideas that we've kind of put into code at this point in time, but we do need to get the public's input on this as well.
So add that to the list.
Okay, just looking for comments, all right. Uh, and then this is just an example of what that could mean in terms of how that would be graphically represented in the code. Chapter Six is signs, nothing new there, uh, it would be carrying over our existing sign, sign code, uh, with those modifications that we made earlier this year, but wholesale taking that and putting it into the, the current code, with the exception of we're trying to figure out how to get artwork as part of the, the community realm as well, and we think we found, uh, a method for allowing whole-wall murals in appropriate locations, and so we've written that into the code.
That's good, because the Mickey Mouse we went through on Grandma's Noodles to get that one approved was ridiculous.
Sure, yeah, and we were trying, we tried to make sure.
And we look at what, you know, what's happened now at jury engineering and others that are just really nice additions, and it shouldn't have to go through the process that, that Grandma's Noodles went through by any stretch.
Sure.
And, and would we allow, um, you know, art, um, I think of the art piece that was in Colorado Springs where it kinda went across the buildings, would we allow that type of work in? I'm, I don't know if that would be a sign, or how, how that would?
Is that something like a cross, uh, over top of a street, or?
Yeah, it actually connected a couple, two buildings, and it was over the street, it was like a metal sculpture.
You know, that would be something that could probably fit into the, well, if it could probably, it would fit into this category, because that would likely be a government agency that would be approving that, which is one of the criteria for allowing it. So, you know, the city would have to approve a, a, a revocable license for it to be cancily overt over the street, and that's one of the, the, uh, uh, criteria, or the, the ways of going about getting approval for an artwork.
Okay, it would be through the sign code?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, and then wireless communications, again, kind of just taking what we have today, carrying it wholesale over into the new code, as it would relate to, uh, you free, new freestanding towers, that's exactly what we would require today, which is a public hearing, uh, for those, if you've got a project that's, uh, integrated into an existing building, those today are administrative and would remain administrative, and the same thing with the new small cell sites, uh, that we're seeing, those are administrative today and would continue to be administrative under the code. Chapter Eight is the development review process, and again, the processes are almost identical to what we have in the code today. We have an administrative process in the code today, public hearing, uh, processes for the Board of Adjustment for Variances, for PUDs that come to Planning Commission and Council, and, uh, for floodplain administration-type things. All those processes stay the same, the only thing we're talking about is going from more of the PUD districts to more standard zone districts, which would move things from public hearings to administrative cases. Chapter Nine would, uh, deal, or deals with, uh, non-conformities, and again, that's pretty much taking, uh, our language as we have it today, and moving it over into this, uh, code, uh, with a few minor changes, and that is a little more flexibility on what can be done with non-conforming uses. A little more ability to expand, uh, the footprint, uh, maybe a little more ability to expand parking without meeting the strict landscape requirements, if it's, if it's a site that was developed 50 years ago and they just wanna do a little addition, um, those types of things would be able to be accommodated under the non-conforming section. Then Chapter Ten is, uh, the enforcement provisions, just what happens if there's a violation, that's pretty much brought over from our code today. And then finally, Chapter Eleven would be measurements, rules of construction, and definitions. Uh, we will be defining a bunch of terms, uh, that aren't defined well in our code today, uh, we'll up, update some, uh, definitions to more reflect today's current, uh, development types and parameters, and with that, uh, our next steps would be the open house that we're having on September 12th, that'll be here at City Hall, and that's where we will introduce the entire draft code to the, the public. Following that, uh, release on the 12th, we will have the ability for the public to go onto our website, advancearvada.org, and, uh, we'll have an interactive tool where people can actually go in and make comments on a PDF version of the code, and we will then get those comments and start to be able to see where some trouble spots may be, where, uh, the public thinks we need to change things, where the public thinks things are going in the right direction, and, uh, then we will come back to you, uh, with, uh, information on those, what we hear from the public at the December 9th, uh, I think, believe it's December 9th is what we're looking at for the next workshop, where we will take that information, compile it into another, uh, version of the code for you to look at based on those comments. And then we'll also during that time be looking at the remapping effort for the, uh, the community to the new zone districts.
I would suggest we have nothing else on the agenda that evening.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, yeah, we've got members of the Planning Commission, thank you all for being here, and you may have some questions at this point.
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor, or a few comments, just that there's a lot to like in this initial draft, where we're seeing all of this kinda come together, and I do concur with all the comments that, uh, council members and commission members have made about, kinda pinch points where we still have to talk about building heights in certain areas and, and parking, but the revisions to the zoning districts I thought were a great step, because we've cut the number of districts from like more than 40 to a reasonable number of, of 20-something. Um, the height transition zone, y- you can read through it and understand it, and it's less than a page compared to the bulk plane requirements and calculations that we used to have, so I think that's a great, uh, change. The, the food truck vending, uh, effort was revitalized a little bit, um, I'd like to see a little bit more, but we're taking some steps to bring that, uh, unique and innovative, uh, way to eat to our city. The ADUs, the, uh, dwelling units, the, uh, I think good revisions there, and I would add that other things we have to talk about, because we don't see, we don't see in this draft, the regulations for short-term rentals and oil and gas operations that are kinda critical. Um, so there'll be several things to talk about, but it's a great draft for initial one, considering all the things we're trying to update and revise, so, lot of thanks to a lot of people.
Right. Anything else from Planning Commission members? From our advisory committee, anything?
We've been disbanded.
I'm sorry?
I think we had our last meeting, I'm not sure if there are any future meetings planned for us.
We did have our last, we did have our last scheduled meeting, July 25th with the, the group, but if, uh, we do feel it's appropriate to get them back together again, we'd be happy to do that, and I'm sure they'd be happy to get back together.
Good. Okay, we know what the next steps are?
I have.
Anything else from council on this? Seen none?
Yeah.
We'll close the workshop, move to public comment if anybody would like to address City Council at this time. Seen none? Reports from City Council? Mr. McGough?
Yes, I think it's appropriate to commend the Festivals Commission and the park staff of the city for a very, I believe, I, at least I, from my perspective, very successful Arvada Day celebration on Saturday. Uh, the Clear Creek Regional Park was the host site for the event again this year, and the site has been further developed over the last couple of years, and there's now a performance stage and a, uh, a rooftop area, I'm not quite, it wouldn't quite qualify as an amphitheater, I don't think, but it has the configuration and protection for the performers and electric power for instruments and so forth, but, uh, wonderful turnout, uh, great number of, uh, people engaged in lots of activities there. Um, Wanco, one of our partners in that venture, uh, when it came into being, uh, provided it, uh, parking throughout its parking lot, and, uh, that whole parking lot was full, as well as everything that was available, uh, in the, uh, park itself and along the streets there. It was, uh, very well attended, and, uh, I can't help but think from every perspective, uh, that it was a very successful event, so congratulations to all those who participated in it and made that, uh, such a success.
Right, Ms. Ford?
Well, I just wanted to report on the, uh, Point 04 Trolley Event that took place on, uh, Thursday night. Uh, we had a number of people show up, it was a fun event, um, and we were able to raise money and take a ride on a trolley, and it was a lot of fun.
Right, Ms. Piper?
Uh, this weekend, the Dr. Cog, uh, annual retreat up in Keystone, uh, a lot of good discussion, uh, some around smart cities, uh, Dr. Cog's kinda taking a, a little bit broader role around data and data governance, because all the cities and counties use that to make decisions, and how do you share information from one, you know, like, good example that, that was discussed there is, you know, Golden Make It, weather events or something that's, that may impact our, impact Arvada, how do we share data, what formats, how do we collaborate better? Um, so, a lot of discussion around that, and then the, um, area on aging obviously is always talked about, so, good weekend. Uh, since I was the chair, I went ahead and was brave enough to say there was, uh, an open bar on me.
Oh.
So, uh, it was fun. Which, I was trying to win brownie points, so, over, uh, the pasture.
Okay.
It was a good weekend.
Very good. Uh, this weekend, Saturday, was also the, uh, Arts and Ales at the Arvada Center, a great, great event, and, uh, wonderful people there, and seeing the kiddos with the face painting and some, uh, great variety of, uh, drinks and, and artist items, and it was a great, great event.
And I, and I heard you were there.
Yeah. Very good.
I missed, I missed you.
Oh.
We just missed.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Devon?
Our next workshop will be on September 23rd, we will have, uh, updated on Resilient Neighborhoods, and then our budget and pay plan update will also be provided that evening.
Right. Ms. Morris, anything from the City Attorney's Office?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, we stand adjourned.